Tonight's agenda. I don't think we have any changes. Some people can't, I think everyone's here that needs to be, but if anyone has to leave or go, speak now, you have to change your order. No, you're good?
You're good.
Okay? So unless anyone has any changes to that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, November 4th, 2023.
Just a second. Jean, a second by Carol. Okay. All right, we've got a motion on the second. A motion by Jean and a second by Carol to approve tonight's agenda of 23 items. Do you have any other discussion or questions? And now we can call for a vote. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes heard. Motion carries. Agenda approved. Tonight's guests, I know many of you are on the agenda already and some of you, have you signed? We haven't signed yet, but if you have, you sign it, please. And if you were here to weigh in, what do you do? Introduce yourself and everyone.
I'm here. I can't, I have to talk now. I can't talk later, I guess. On number nine, the bike trail. Since I brought that to your attention last June about changing the access to get to the bike trail because I went up to the county engineer and he gave me a map as to what we needed to do to get that entrance off from right there on that corner. And I see that this is on the agenda tonight. There are maps in here. Are any of these pertaining to the bike path and the property that you have to acquire from the Ags? So I was just wondering if the path was still the same coming off from, and having a crossing and then making sidewalk on the east side of Maple Street is what the county engineer said would be a very good idea. But this has never been addressed again until I seen this on your agenda for tonight about the bike path.
You still have to cross Maple at some point to get into downtown, which is part of the expansion of the bike path they're working on.
Right.
So that, those parcels of land, I think you're speaking to are part of that to allow a better access all the way into town and safer access.
Right.
Is that correct, committee? That's bike path. Do you want any of you have a better answer for her regarding that?
Is it, they're here to discuss?
Partly. Not so much the crossing, but yes.
Okay. Then I will, I will wait to hear what you have me saying, if it's different than what the county engineer told me would be a very good idea to do because I was approached already in May about coming to the council with it, but it never materialized until I happened to see it on here tonight.
So what was his suggestion?
Then I, pardon?
What was his suggestion?
He was suggesting to put, to have the crossing further to the south and then make sidewalk along the east side of the, of the street so that they weren't crossing right down there on the corner.
Side of the corner.
Number, the biggest thing that people contacted me about was coming off from 10, they turn that corner and if you're crossing for that bike path right there, you can't see it. And too many times little kids get so far ahead of their moms or dads or whatever and they, you know, when you're five and six years old and you're riding a bike, you don't always stop to think about the consequences are.
Okay.
That's why I'm here tonight.
And you did look at, he's ordered some signs for helping that and alerting traffic. The problem is the traffic on 10 that turns, it doesn't know that right away. So we can't put the signs up, but we can ask the county to put them up.
I can put them on the highway, the blacktop, just not the highway.
Yeah, that's what he told me. They, they, the county cannot put them on the, the street, but they've been on the highway.
Yeah, so we just have to.
Which they did in Samble for their bike path.
I talked to the DOT and they said we couldn't put it on there unless the bike path was actually on the highway.
Right.
And they're looking at a whole new approach where they're looking to hook up and come into town.
The old railroad.
Yes, they're going there. They're not, they're not working with this section you're talking about.
Is that okay? Anyone else here? Is that enough of your comment? You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say? Who's here for something not on the agenda? Okay. Marlon? Okay. All right, move on to item number six, approving the minutes from the 11/20/23 meeting. It's a long one. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the 11/20/23 regular meeting. One second. Okay, Jean's made the motion and Lexi is seconded to accept the minutes as presented this evening for approval. Does anyone find anything else, corrections that need to be made? Whatever discussion related to that. Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented from the 11/20/23 regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes heard. Motion carries. Minutes approved. Actually, you have payment of claims. It's on a white sheet and there are two little additional ones that should be in front of your spot as well for EMC and Senex Fuel. Alex or Kelly could answer a lot of your questions related to any of these specifically?
EMC insurance, is that?
That's the monthly insurance. I think we're looking to try and do that yearly if we can, like the next time it comes up, but that will be for a couple months.
So it'd be good six months, right?
Right.
I see we have the Swyback Street Service at $46,000, so, but we're not quite done yet, right? So that's, is that paid up to date or do you know?
That's paid up to date, I believe.
Okay.
I think we just got another, yeah, $11,000.
Let's put this at $79,506.25. And we had budgeted 30 and then the sale of the equipment was what, 27?
35.
35, okay. And then we added some more to it also.
And another 30, I believe.
Yeah, I think so too. So there should be one. It should be good for a while then, hopefully, when you're done. And I also question that Engineered Equipment Services, that rotary roller and stuff, Kelly?
That's for the, is that like the $1,200 on?
$32,000.
Oh, that's a compressor for the lagoon.
Oh, okay. I wonder if you're doing it? Okay, you gotta get that, okay?
Good.
All righty.
We use that, Mary, the rescue money, funds by that side of mine separately there. We'll try to keep the track of those. And there was just a notice from the state about making sure that we have those funds secured and contracted prior to the deadline, I think, next year. So that, yeah, we can use them also.
I have one question on page one about the Pitney bows, meter lease, am I in the right line? $399.45?
Yeah.
And that's for postage?
Um, that's the, like, lease for the machine that does the postage.
For the machine. And we pay that how often?
Um, yeah, I think it's monthly. I'd have to check, but I'm pretty sure it's monthly.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve the claims report. All of this, including the two additional? And the two additional, sorry. Okay, that's good for your second as well, all right. A motion by Carol and a second by Lexi to approve the payment of claims as presented in the packet as well as the two additional claims on the table. Last chance for some more questions. Payment as arranged, okay. All in favor of approving payment of claims as presented tonight, both additional and standard, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes. Motion carries. Claims approved. To be paid. In your packet, you have the January bank statement, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Alex, on the bank statement, this transaction number date. And what is that module?
Um, where are you looking? Like the third column?
Yep.
On there, yeah.
Okay. What's, what does the B stand for?
Uh, utility bill.
Okay.
Then the GL is general ledger.
accounts payable.
And then.
What's the BK?
BK, it's a bank record one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Payroll, accounts payable, yep.
Okay, we'll move to the next item. Which first, I think we'll have a dis- presentation or discussion of information from the bike path is to approve the content creation and pay for costs associated with transfer of bank state property and easements for the future bike path connection to downtown. Deal free, ladies. Okay?
As you're aware, we've been working with Ag State for several months. Yeah. The railroad property is currently owned by Ag State and we've been working towards either an easement or a gifting process of that railroad property to, back to the city of Palena, which they, I believe, once owned many years ago. And the purpose of that was to, for a proposed bike path that connected downtown Palena using the railroad property and then also connecting the newer path, proposed path to the existing fitness trail. So that would eliminate, or wouldn't eliminate it, but give you another option from crossing at the location that you were questioning, Linda. And anyway, Ag State has agreed to gift the property to city of Palena. It, there are five parcels involved with that. So each parcel has a little bit of a different way of gifting and I believe you have maps included in your packet that more or less outline each parcel and what the proposal is for the gifting. So parcel one, I'll skip the zeros, it's 143265. Ag State has agreed to gift the south 25 feet, which is about approximately half the width of that parcel. And it is the same with parcel 143270. Those two parcels is what's on the west side of Maple Street. And once you cross Maple Street, the agreement would be gifting 15 feet to the north and 15 feet to the south of the crest of that railroad property. And then parcel 181465, they would gift the entire parcel to the city of Palena. The agreement with parcel 181465, the city would need to give Ag State a permanent easement to be able to go around their grain storage ring. They need to get to that backside to check fans and other maintenance reasons. So they would want a permanent easement to be able to get back there. And then on top of that, we would need to agree that the bike path in that area would need to be thick enough to accommodate their.
Trucks.
And then the one parcel, 142100, that's the parcel farthest to the west and that would allow access to Clark Street from the railroad property. And Ag State has agreed to gift a portion of that parcel, approximately 25 feet by 75 feet or so. The agreement then with Ag State would be that the city of Palena cover all costs associated with this transfer. Would mean writing up the contract, that's agreed to by both parties. Any surveying, abstracting, recording piece, that would all be on the city of Palena since they are, Ag State's already gifting that property to the city of Palena. So I guess what we're asking is if the city would be willing to accept those charges in return for the gift.
Back to us.
Back to you.
Well, I think it's great that they've decided to do that.
It is.
It makes life a lot easier for you guys when you start writing up grants and everything is done. Have it all down in black and white and contract done and abstract done and.
Well, we do feel like that was a negative of the grant we wrote.
I'm sure.
Was that we didn't have that, own that property and the easement, it was kind of up in the air and, yeah.
No, I think it just sounds like a good plan. And will work out good for you guys to get, hopefully. And it gives much of the money to help build it.
Yeah, yeah. So there's that, yeah.
So, at least we got this, this far.
Baby steps.
Yeah. The best house fan, I think.
So I have a question. Excuse me, that parcel 181450, that, that would be 30 feet total width, I assume?
Right. That's the one that is going from the crest?
15 south from the crest, 15 from the crest.
Yeah.
A total of 30 feet.
Correct.
And I think that one before that, that 143265, that 25 feet is gonna be right south of the Agronomy Building, isn't it? Where that, two others.
It's the south half of that parcel, so.
Yeah, south of that, right.
Close to those evergreens? Ag State wants to keep that north side because they do drive.
Through there.
Through there.
Right.
So they wanna be able to keep ownership of that piece.
And we'll have 25 though. And you need how much for the trail, 20?
You need 20 feet.
Okay.
And that would give that a bit of a buffer zone too for any activity going on.
Right, right. And of course, we wanna try to keep all those trees if possible, but.
Right.
Yes, because the trees are a nice windbreak and something like that. Looks good.
The, oh, let's go back to that 181450, that 15 feet wide. So there is, there is transmission lines there, which means that the power for the city comes in on that. Um, that's something, we as a city would need to have access to that. So if we ever have to drive a truck on it, we need to, you think, Kelly, would that need to be heavier? Probably, and if anything happens there, it's gonna be a bigger truck than we have and it'll be nipco coming soon. Yeah, so that's something you might wanna consider on that also.
And where is that? Where are those? Let's see, right here.
The line follows the railroad tracks three and a half miles out of town.
All the way out. So, okay, great.
Yep.
Okay, then, okay.
And then probably, of course, you're gonna, yeah, probably this also.
Sure.
And those lines actually follow the railroad all the way out to the trestle.
And a lot of grants require a certain thickness of cement anyway.
Right, so if you ever plan on extending it out to the trestle, you'd have to keep that in mind also.
Sure.
We do too. Do you know, Rita, how big they want the cement? Do you have any other?
If I remember right, it was six inches normally. So if you need to drive on it, I was thinking it had to be at least 10 inches. Does anybody remember that? It's been a while. But what's also nice about all this is that last parcel, 181465, you know, that gives a connection from Wood Street. And then if you cross that little ravine, it makes a connection to Wood Street on the south side as well. And then the economic development.
Property.
Property is owned right in that area too. So if we would need a parking spot or.
I just wanna jump on it right now.
A trailhead of some kind. And then that gives you another alternative route to downtown.
Perfect.
Is that closed off then? Because they used that for a road for a while.
Yeah, when the street was tore up.
Tore up, yeah, they used that for a road.
They cut through there.
Yeah.
They dug it all back out.
Yeah, it's dug back out.
So that's not connected anymore.
Would like the city to take on the paperwork end of it?
Cost and, yeah, the contract and.
And are you guys been going and talking to her then and tell her kind of how this is all gonna be done or work with her?
We can.
Yeah, because you guys work with him, so you know, and then have him look at it before it gets brought back to us.
And I sent this paperwork, the maps, to Tony.
Already.
Jungers are ready at Alton, just to make sure we were on the same page. And I talked to him last Friday and he was agreeable with everything that's being discussed.
Get it to her and go from there and, because I think you have all the understanding of how it's gotta be done. And then we can okay it and get it abstracted and updated.
Okay?
Good. Any other questions for us?
We move forward, they are requesting official approval for costs associated with them to have our attorney, our city attorney begin that work. So we'll do make a motion on the second and a vote on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract creation and pay for the cost by the city for the transfer of the Ag State property and easements for the future bike path.
One second. Okay, we have a motion by Carol and a second by Lexi to approve the contact, contract creation and pay for costs associated with the transfer of the Ag State property and easements for future bike path connection to downtown as requested in these, is it five parcels?
Yes.
Five parcels. Do you have any other questions for the committee or others? We'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving this contract creation and to absorb the costs associated with transfer of the property to be donated by Ag State with easements for the future bike path to downtown, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Yes.
Plus.
Awesome. Okay.
Thanks for coming. You had a good job.
Thanks, guys. All right, we have a resolution to appoint Alex Griggs as the deputy clerk. We need to get some raise. Carol, do or Jay, are you speaking on that?
Carol. Jay and I on the reporting committee, so we did a six-month evaluation with Alex this past Friday and she passed with flying colors. We don't have a rating, but we feel she's doing her job, she's learning her job and she's feeling comfortable with it. So I thought that we would agree to have her as our deputy clerk and we are suggesting a $1.15 raise.
On the resolution to appoint Alex Griggs as a deputy clerk with a $1.15 hour raise effective.
For six months.
Yeah, for six months, it was the 30th, so.
Okay.
Effective December 1st. Yep. One second. Okay, so that motion by Jean and a second by Alex. Introduce the resolution to appoint Alex as the deputy clerk with a $1.15 hour raise effective as of December 1st, 2023. Does anyone have any other discussion on this item? No, and call for a roll call vote.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Honka.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Rowe.
Aye.
Resolution approved. Would you like to have your vote right now?
Yeah.
Sure. Please stand and raise your right hand and then raise your own.
Let's see. The, I'm sorry. I, Alex Griggs, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge all duties of the office of city of Palena in Palena as now or hereafter required by law.
Do? There's no cool badge. He gets one only badges. All right, and then the next step, a resolution to authorize Alex to be an additional signer on with the bank, which we had previously when a deputy, someone has the deputy clerk role, that is considered their other duties, so we need to make sure that that is allowed.
I'll make a motion to authorize, motion to do the resolution to authorize Alex Griggs as an additional signer of the security state bank.
One second.
Oh, go ahead, Jay. We don't wanna fight over it.
All right, Jay, we're giving to you then?
Okay.
Okay. So a motion by Carol and a second by Jay to, for the resolution presented to authorize Alex as an additional signer with security state bank. Do we have any other discussion related to agenda item 11? Okay, now we'll do a roll call vote.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Honka.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Rowe.
Aye.
Okay, number 12 is a resolution to approve a $20 an hour raise, but a total amount for cleaning city offices and allowing community room. That was with the previous, several cleaners have been being paid and we started this new person out lower than that originally and so it wasn't just on, yeah, previously. So now she's been doing a fabulous job, is that what she's at, Abby?
1850.
Yes, thank you. And so it seemed appropriate to, Michelle and Alex have all said, and I don't know if you all agree there, Nathan, if that's been good cleaning here around here, but I think it's definitely improved.
And she started sometime in December? Was it the middle of December? So we'll have to make it effective.
She started in May, or June.
June.
Yeah.
So, six months will be.
Yeah, six months will be in December.
It'll be middle of December or something like that, so you'll just have to look at.
Yeah.
This is a part-time position that she's canceled.
She's about 10 hours each payroll, that's like every two weeks, three hours a week.
But she comes weekly. And I think when we had all that water come in, I thought Michelle told me that she actually scrubbed all of this carpet. And cleaned it all up.
She cleaned all the chairs in the lounge room.
And she did the lounge room chairs clean up. She's been doing a lot of extra things, so. You know, they brought it up that she should probably give a little extra. To make the emotion that we approve the $20 an hour for the. Effective at her six months?
Yes.
Lexi made a motion to have support.
Yeah, one second.
And Steve was seconded. Okay, so we have introduced a resolution to approve $20 an hour for cleaning city offices and allow maybe going effective at her six-month maybe date. A motion by Lexi and a second by Steve. Do we have any other discussion?
This is what we've been paying before.
I think, yeah, before we hired her. Started her a little more. So. That's okay. Lexi, call for a roll call vote.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Hongkum.
Aye.
Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Rowe.
Aye.
Alright, item 13 is to name the member and an alternate to the Northwest Iowa Area Solid Waste Agency Committee.
I don't think we got a letter with that one.
Capital. Who was on it?
Yeah, it was on. That's Chris on that.
Steve.
Kelly wants, yeah.
Kelly.
Who was the backup?
Who's the other?
Were you? I think you were, but I won't swear on that.
No, I didn't know.
You never.
I don't know.
It was like the army.
I don't know anymore.
Did you ever go?
No. I get.
Yeah. And that's right.
Yeah.
Yes, they sent it in the mail, I guess, to Michelle, and she wants to. They just need to reappoint it and restore two people.
I can be the alternate.
Okay. Now you gotta remember. That you are. Was there a motion to name?
Oh, my gosh.
Kelly's the primary and Steve's the alternate?
Yep.
I make a motion to make Kelly the primary to go to help come up aside of solid waste meetings and Steve as the alternate.
Just like.
And a motion by Carol and a second by Lexi to name Kelly and Kelly's the primary and Steve is the alternate to the Northwest Iowa Area Solid Waste Agency Committee. Do we have any other discussion? And all in favor of approving Kelly and Steve as member and alternate to Northwest Iowa Area Solid Waste Agency, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carries. Congratulations. We should go once, Kelly and Steve. That was very important. Uh, considering the Upper Des Moines Client Services request of $740, this has been, there's the letter, right? In the packet. Yeah, that's amazing. That explains what they're doing.
Yeah.
I tried to call them today to find out kinda what some of the others towns do, but the gal that was there didn't know anything about it, so I got. I know it kinda by what they serve for our area, I'm guessing. So. I just thought it'd be interesting to find out. So this helps cover their office basically cost to facilitate assistance to people just for phone. That's amazing what they spend.
Oh, amen.
And this is just in Paulina, correct? The 48? Yes, 48, 465 is just in Paulina. Cause it was low compared to the year before. If you look at 22, that was 79.
Holy moly.
And then 21 was 50, so.
Yeah.
I say, I'm surprised. I would've thought it'd be higher.
Too.
As high, as expensive as a lot of things are.
But look at how many they serve though. This went down from like 120 and 74 to 254 to 107. Also.
I'll make a motion to. Motioning or just considering this? You can choose an amount of your choosing. They are requesting the 740. But the amount is really a decision. We've always done a request to the amount. I think we have. I'll make a motion that we grant Upper Des Moines Opportunity Plant Services a request of $740. Jay Jones made a motion to approve their requested financial support of $740 to Edmo. Does anyone else have support for this motion?
Hold on a second.
Jay. And a motion by Jean and a second by Jay to allow continued partnership and financial support in the amount of $740 of Edmo Client Services for Paulina customers. Does anyone else have questions related to this? Ask. And then all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Alright, all ayes. Make sure to get them however they got paid last year. I saw it was a chapter mail. Alright, we are tied at 15, and the alternate location of the South of Ryan can cage. As I would assume many of you have heard, we have over the years and maybe more so recently, um, since COVID maybe. People drank more since COVID, but it appears there is a lot of consumption in Paulina that and a lot of can reduction, which has been a benefit to the South of Ryan Music Boosters, they have a great benefit to that. But the location where it is, is tied to property that wants to make a change and remove a building that is used for some of their extra can storage, which is very needed. And so they have some ideas for us tonight to consider, otherwise we also have some.
Actually, yeah, I just wanted to kinda reiterate what you said there, that we are, it is a good fundraiser for our music department. The money that we get from the can cage helps us to purchase instruments, purchase music, sends some of our students, even our instructors, to different camps. Helps with our uniform, and it helps with the trips that the kids take for the music department, which they do about every four years. I also feel personally, I've had two kids that have gone through it, and I really think it creates a good work ethic in this. Two to, I mean, they have to work towards this. It's not just a free trip given out. I mean, if you're there, you get points, which is deducted for, you know, money for the trips, so. And I think we can all agree that this day and age, our kids are so busy anymore and sports and activities where it's hard for them to hold down a good job, to really get a good work ethic, so I feel it's really helped there. Yes, we're, it's, our, it's too small. I mean, for some reason, Paulina compared to Pringer and Sutherland, we have a lot more, it fills up a lot faster. So I also feel this is a good benefit for the community. It helps our recyclings from getting overloaded. Right now, I was talking to somebody who does the recycling, they really recycle very little anymore. Paper products, cardboard products, they don't even do a whole lot of recycling with plastic anymore. I would hate to see our recycling bins and everything getting overloaded with the cans. It could, in a way, represent money to aid, you know, the schools and. There's also quite a few redemption centers anymore. I don't know, the one in Orange City closed, the one in Sheldon. You know, Cherokee is where we typically go. We have to make appointments. I mean, that's how busy they're getting. Spirit Lake, they want you separating Pepsi from Coke and.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't even know if, if Sheldon's even has theirs anymore either, but.
They're open like two days a week.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe just the afternoons.
And so I think if, you know, it really helps us to have that, we can, you know, we have a trailer that we can store it in at times too, but unfortunately that's been filling up. Like, we literally had just gone and we filled up the trailer.
On the first.
On the first, and she sent a picture, what, a week later?
No, it was on, so the first was on Sunday, and on Tuesday, the can cage was full of donations. And so we have them currently stored in a shed on the property that's not ours. That there is obviously a community support here that we're able to provide and that's benefiting the music program.
Very much so. And I mean, I don't wanna take away from our businesses either, cause, but I know like the grocery store, they only take so many at one time.
They don't take them at all anymore.
They don't take them at all anymore.
No, I think that's why yours has increased. They sold them quite a few months ago.
Okay.
So.
So yes, and I do agree, it's in a bad spot. I mean, it catches the wind, it catches, we talked about, you know, different options. We talked about moving it, like, onto school property. We really don't wanna do that. I mean, we don't, we have the whole no alcohol on school property, and to be truthfully honest, I don't know if you, well, Brenda knows, cause she's been there before, but some of the bottles, some of the cans that we get in there, they're not empty. They're, they're not empty. I was really frustrated the last time that we emptied it, because, I don't know, people were smoking as they were drinking, they were putting ashes in the cans. I mean, it's the respect to what's in there. And from a healthcare concern, I never reported it to anybody, but I found a pot bottle that had a needle in it. So we have to kinda re-watch what's put in there too, and I think the location, it also is kinda like right by a recycling bin. We're getting recycling stuff put in there too, cat food, cans, all, all kinds of stuff. So yes, we strongly feel that it does need to be moved. The location, I guess, a few people have expressed a possibility of where one could go. I mean, we are, we are looking like we'd be willing to, you know, we paved the area way back when, this was before my kids, but. It, that area was, must've been grass at one time, and they paved that to put that on. I feel our music boosters would probably be, you know, all for doing that again, and even building us around to go to kinda help prevent the wind. But we don't, I mean, with our no alcohol on school grounds, we can't put it on school grounds anymore.
Well, we also can't stop those that are donating what they're donating, you know, because that become all different hours in the day, so we don't know what's coming, so again, to add to that, if they choose to donate, we just don't want them in the school property. And our other communities are in the middle of their town and their city.
Right.
Correct. Well, you kinda want it very accessible for people. You don't want them to have to hunt for it.
Right, right. I mean, I was driving around town and just, just kinda looking at different areas, you know, I know we have that back parking where the semis park, you know, behind the grocery store too. You know, again, we paved an area and put us around, it would kinda stop some of that. I know, I don't know if that's city property or not, but that white fence that's along Broadway, you know, where you guys have the gazebo.
The pocket park?
Yeah, behind there, there is a fair amount of grass area that you could put it in there, and then it's accessible from the alley. You don't have people like out here on, on our Broadway, down there. In Broadway, you know, they're, they're dumping their cans or dumping whatever out there, so that's kind of a little bit, yes, it's more hidden, but I think if we educated the community, cause not only if we change it and move it, we have to educate them on that, but I would like it to be reeducated on what is acceptable to be put in there.
I think it'd be nice to say rinse your cans or your bottles, please.
Well, that.
That, I think, should be done. I mean, you can put it out there, I hope people won't do it, but.
You know, I understand people are snacking when they're eating, but we don't want your plastic bags that have food items in there.
They had somebody's entire garbage bag from your grandparent last year.
So, I mean, some of this is respect too, but I think just, we're gonna move it, people need to be reeducated on that, they need to be reeducated on what to put in there, so.
Few notes on it.
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, I had a couple little flyers of the areas that I was talking about, if you wanted to. I mean, like I said, it's not my place to say where, that's obviously your guys' choice. I just was thinking.
Think Brenda did some.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, yeah, these were just ones that I did, and you should have done, and then. It just kinda, they've given some thought on some areas, that mean, it's not like it's a, I mean, behind the white fence, yes, that's a beautiful area, but it's back behind, I mean, we don't wanna put a dirty can cage. In a nice, beautiful area of Paulina either, so.
Yeah, first one, but I from out that, I'll probably Schneider, the ones that we put. Those are where it is now, and then you've got the two municipal parking lots, and the next two, option A and B, and then option C is the, was considered the hatch.
Having area where a lot of times, like, I know both my boys took pictures, I've seen people all the time back there.
Four first ideas.
Yeah.
I think that they're doing.
Yeah.
Well, we can't.
So, right. I know, which, it was.
He wants to put.
There was that one, so.
There's actually two lots to look at on my page and that's a.
We're trying to see now, how much is sitting.
That's option C.
Bingo. Any more meeting minutes? Any more of the meeting minutes? Okay.
You know, Eric said it's rust. In the pocket part, I'm not sure if we should. Oh, and I wanna add, one of the things that we are asking, we're discussing things, because again, we're talking about these cages, but we also need to consider, cause right now, we're using Gennade's shed to store the overflow of cans. We have a trailer full of, of cans right now. A trailer is full, we have the shed full of cans, and we have cages that need to be emptied. And again, as she had said, we're subject to Bill's can corner redemption, and when they can take it, we have two appointments this month, if not a third. So we're trying to get them out, but we're limited, so we also need to be thinking about a space where we can put a shed. It would be a new shed, unlike where we're currently storing things, but we need to be talking about, and we measured it, right now, the shed that we're using is a 10 by 20, but there's things in it. So I think we're needing to think about at least an eight by 15 shed, because we have the bags that will go in there, but we've also had a parent make out of assault block containers, and then two by fours where you can set bags in. It makes it so much faster for the kids when they're, when they're sorting cans, we have to sort in between cans and plastic bottles, and so if you can make it easier for them, they're more willing to volunteer their time. So we need to also be considering not just the cages that we're gonna be collecting the cans, but having the, a shed for run over. I thought you have a sign that there's no plastic. You're still getting all kinds of plastics. No, plastic, like, two liter, two liter bottles or a 20 ounce bottle. We have to separate those from cans, so when. Doesn't it say no plastic on your thing? We say no, no glass bottles. No glass on it? And they still, and they still give us glass bottles, but we have to separate the plastic from the cans, and so. I thought you didn't do plastic at all.
Oh, no.
So that needs to be thought of to have an allocation. Okay. I have to take my.
Oh, shoot.
Just, you're just getting my cans.
Can't they use maybe like the, for storage, the. The city park though, like that little, like if they need an overflow, if they have an overflow, like.
We have an overflow every month.
Like, we don't use that?
It's all in that.
Building? Yes.
Oh, it's, it's you.
Chambers got their chairs and stuff on the south side.
We did a contract with you guys last year.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. They have that stuff in there.
We'll take that away. I mean, the building, the building that we're looking at putting on the site would be purchased by the music boosters.
Right, we just need a location that's big enough to have the cage, which probably needs to be bigger than we have currently, since we have a lot of donations, and then also put a eight by 15 shed. Whoa. So you would kinda talk behind 30 white, but.
It's a municipal parking lot, and then the one that's.
But that's, but it's not all ours. Some of it's.
I don't know.
This is that building back behind.
It's on option A, our city.
You're right, so the area to the south is owned by Hurdings, but. Kinda long and skinny. The blue part? Yeah. So that's. I just like it, cause it's kinda protected, it's not right in the eyes, but yet it's easy, accessible, but I don't know if there's room for a shed besides. And maybe we need to put the shed some other location, because it's not something for the community to use, it's for music boosters, so if they don't have to be the same location.
Oh, okay. Would this school, would this, this school put like a shed up for you guys, like to store it there or no?
No, currently we're using Gennade's shed that's right behind. And I think it's just because it's grown over the years. I don't know, I've only been a part of music boosters for a few years.
Behind 30 white is, there's all that spot between buildings and that that we have. I think that spot, like you said, is over there by. Hatchery.
Okay, what about, by the hatchery only go to East Stand?
Yeah, clue to the East Stand.
That'd be right corner.
Right next to that building.
Yeah.
I kinda looked at that too, but I was worried, you know, taking away from the semi parking, but then you have that across the.
Yeah, they're supposed to be.
They're not supposed to park.
Okay. Okay.
That is the lowest value or hatchery of valuable properties.
That is the lowest value or hatchery of valuable properties.
You know what?
To the very end there.
Yeah, down there, that building, down there by the little.
They'll still be on that.
Yeah, when is that white building?
Semi. What is that white building, Luscher's?
I think it was old feed building, Luscher's. I think Luscher's own that, don't they?
Really? I wonder what he's got, you know, if he would consider. I don't know what he's using it for, but, no question. Do you even?
Yeah, he would.
You don't think so?
No, you know, that would be out of the way down there, you know? A small building shed could go there.
To drive through.
Oh, you mean where you get the odd stuff in that, but right next to that? There's a net right there. He's saying, you know, down where the old jail is, right? You know what they call that, the old jail?
The little bathroom, the jails. Get your dogs in there that ride around.
There's garages all along there. He says there's a cement pad already next to those garages that are north of that.
Isn't that the CAs?
No.
I mean, like Brent, where Brent's.
Yeah, being that white shed going north and south.
And did they store, store, have storage inside the old line shed?
Yeah, what, what's inside that?
Oh, so this is the city park.
Flower house.
What's in the jail?
Well, they need.
How big is that?
That's still.
It's big?
No.
The jail so?
You're all over the brick wall. She stocked the other one now.
Oh, you mean the garage?
Yeah.
So there's nothing in those.
We have some wire in there and.
She wants to write one.
Yeah, right.
And then those flower pots could go in there too. Thank you. That would be like pavement protection and a shed.
If you put one rollers, I'll push them in.
That'd be, that'd be a good spot for them, if they could use the line shed for storage and put the can, and it's right there, it's accessible to people.
You're talking the shed to the north south.
Yep.
That one door, give them that one side, that one.
Well, that stays good because, you know, we got a lot of people at that park. They would have to keep it.
Now, again, because we're getting cans that aren't rinsed by people, just be aware that sometimes waxes and stuff come. I mean, we can't help that.
Well, that's anywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, you can.
This is just a garage.
Okay, just warning.
You know what we're talking about?
I think across from the city park.
Park, yeah, there's, there's like what, four doors, three or four door garage there? And there's a space between that and the old, where the bathrooms are. He says it's already got concrete in there.
Yeah, so the CCA's building.
That'd be a good place to work. And then it's blocked from the wind.
There'd be a cement pad on the south side of the building. We'd have to move some stuff.
Okay, so like there's a gas tank, I'm just looking at Google Maps. So if you move some of that stuff, I think that'd be, what do you mean?
Is that our gas tank, the city's?
I just brought a beacon.
Yeah.
Can have them over there to where you. Yeah, there's like a.
So like this stuff is talking about moving, so we could put something in there.
And there's some out there.
Yep.
And then this building is, has three doors, but then this first portion of it is divided off with a wall inside.
Sure, so we could, we could access.
I think you could access that.
That'd be wonderful.
That'd be wonderful.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Yep. And then you wouldn't have to worry about a building nerve.
That'd be wonderful. In concrete, if you already have concrete.
Right.
Isn't it big enough where you can go to the cage?
If not, we would, we could, you know, if you're okay with us adding more concrete to it.
Is it, is it concrete all the way to the?
I feel like it's concrete on the whole side of that building.
Yeah, it's concrete.
There you go.
That'd be wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, but there's not a concrete connection to the street or the other, or the front. They weren't on the building.
How is it for snow removal in the winter? Just again, for access for the community getting to. I would assume because it's an alleyway or to drive around, people would.
It's always clean.
Yeah, they have to clean from the doors.
They clean all of it.
Perfect.
Yep. Perfect, right. Nickly, almost seven north Nickly approximately, looks like that shed is. And would we want something around the camp thing yet? Are you still thinking that or no?
If you guys want us to, we, we could still put like a windbreak surround.
I don't know.
I think we'd be open to that idea. I would, I would like to see, let's move, let's get it set, because I think we should have a little bit, um, bigger can cage than what we currently have, because obviously it's not too big enough. But then if needed, we'd be open for a, a windbreak.
I wonder about that.
So would we have to have a written agreement to do that?
With the school?
With the school or?
I would think you want maybe something, probably.
I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, music boosters were kind of our own entity, so if you want the agreement to be with music boosters, we don't want it to be something that the school can take from us.
Right.
If that makes any sense, you know, like we tried to do our own funding for our own kids.
Right, no.
We don't want it to be something in agreement with Mr. Riley or the school personnel that they could use it and take it and use it as whatever they want it for.
Right, I wonder if that would be a good idea. And just have them okay it and city and everything's good with music boosters. I don't think that's a bad idea. And then just put a possibility of these, the, you know, surround or something around it.
Yeah, they want to get a reason around, we can go look at it.
Yeah.
If one of them comes down or both of them come down.
Sometimes you guys want to, we can go down there and look and see what we can figure out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's not a good idea.
Yep. Let us know, yeah. When, when do you want to do that?
Just call city hall.
Okay. That's, I'm sorry. She's gone for the next week, so.
Never.
You get the suntan? How soon? You get the suntan?
I will be.
We're volunteers, so I would prefer not to do it in the wintertime. I don't know, um, I mean, it's based on when we can, are volunteers to do that, to move.
When you, it's supposed to have that out of it, did they say?
Jean's been very good with us. She's, uh.
It's been there for.
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee that she was planning on doing anything, taking the building down this winter, but looking at more springtime, I think was when.
When I took care of it, four years, it didn't have any concrete under it, it's.
No, it's, it's.
We were picking up junk out of the grass and trying to keep it clean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think she talked about last year and then sort of caved to this, let it slide.
You can wait till.
And we can talk with her to see when she, I mean, we're, we're at her mercy, so when she wants us out of it, we'll move then.
Well, if you could move the storage though, then you'd be already good. You could put the storage separately, except.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So really the cage itself could just be maintained, check, and you have scum and saliva, and then they get removed when they need to.
Even you could put the cage there, not have the wall for the wall.
Right, yeah, just see how it all.
Oh, yeah, we could put the current cage there and.
Sure.
And, you know, I think as we need to.
Let's do this. Why don't you, um, get with Kelly and take a look at it. Um, the next, the next meeting would be on the eighteenth, Monday the eighteenth.
Okay, so.
Heidi and I can. Well, if you want to wait till after I get back, I can.
Sure.
Oh, then we can do it in January too.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter. Not that they rush, if you guys don't have.
I mean, we could put it on, uh, later agenda and approve it at that point, if you think it's a good location.
Well, we'll get it done before, we'll meet with Kelly before January eighteenth, so if you want to put us back on the agenda for that one.
Well, December eighteen is the next.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so.
I won't, I was thinking of.
So will you be around for December eighteen?
I will, and I think Heidi will cut, will cut that Heidi.
Yeah, either way. Just figure out what you've decided by then maybe.
Sure.
So let's put it on that.
So we table again.
So for January is what you're saying now, or what are you doing?
Yeah, it's just a, well, it's just a consideration for location, so.
Right.
We need to take or anything or take action.
We're just talking about it, and then she's there with him and all that, and see what they got. And make a deal up to the next time. Or next time after, two times after. All right, thank you both for presenting.
Thank you.
Ladies, if anybody has any other questions, I'm sure if you're going to answer, if you think of anything else after this, let us know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I have a key for you at my house for the camping.
Sixteen, third point of the plan. Follow up to something we gave previously. We have to make a decision on a lease renewing existing plan by fifteen, which is before our next meeting, which is why it's on today's agenda. So, Carol made some notes here, right? Okay, I think I laid them out there. Make sure they're written for Kent and the. That, yeah. This just shows what we've been paying this year. Also checked with a couple of towns around us. You see that at the bottom, um, what they pay for their employees, single and family. And then I did it, showed what, what fifteen or a twenty percent would be. When I talked to Mr. Faust about it, I asked him if a lot of the people still do the singles as, um, their employer pays for, and he said, yes. Most of them still do the singles. Um, he said he thought our, um, families, we were a little, uh, high, or a little low, that we are not getting a lot from the families. And so he said he was, he would suggest twenty percent. And, um, he thought we should leave the deductibles alone, the two thousand, four thousand. So that's what I heard from him. And then Primm Guard pays eighty-eight percent of single and eighty-eight percent of family. Sutherland pays seventy-five percent of single and seventy-five percent of family. Supposedly hun, uh, Sandborne pays a hundred percent. Um, I thought they were on HSA, but I can't swear on that.
Sandborne doesn't have HSA?
They are, and Hartley is also, which is a whole different banner. I'm not saying that's something we should look into maybe, but, because I hear it's good. I think, uh, Courthouse has it and has had it for a while.
Wow, the school's had HSA for a long time.
Oh, they have too.
So, and then that is now the option for county employees.
Okay.
HSA.
And I know a lot of farmers, when I worked at the bank, they started doing it. Because they, of course, have insurance, or they have the divided office. So that might be something we want to look at. I don't know if Kent works with that or not, but it would be something we could check into.
Should, it's a blue cross, blue shield.
Yeah, we have the option that our, we're also to participate in the HSA.
Okay.
We're not, we're not forced to do it. I mean, it's not our only option. We've got other options to choose from. But like our policy, the same as what, at least my policy that I choose is the same as what we have here.
Is it? Okay. And I know, um, it sounded like Hartley, I didn't talk to Sandborne myself, but, um, Hartley, they, all the employees do it. They all have the HSA. It's not, they don't have a choice. So, but she said they seem to be happy with it. And she, I think she said they've done it for about five years.
Well, the long and the short, there's no difference between HSA and standard health insurance. Because if you're doing the normal health insurance with a flex plan, you're still getting, more or less still doing the same from plan to plan.
Right, because then you get to pick and choose what you're going to put into your account, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, then your deductibles are different.
Yeah.
On HSA.
Oh, okay.
You better make sure you have that money in your account.
To cover that.
To cover the deductible. So that's, in theory, that's what it's meant to be.
But you can add to it at any time too, can't you?
Every sing, every month you add the HSA.
Okay, I thought that. You didn't have to say at the beginning.
No, it's just like, very similar to a flex.
Flex plan, yep.
And if you have somebody that's really expensive in your house, deductibles aren't.
Yep. So. But I know we have to let Kent know if we're taking the insurance to him by the fifteen, I think he said.
So we decide on this other stuff?
We can wait and think about it or talk about, I mean, I don't care what we do, but I just thought I would write it up, so we would all kind of compare from this year to next year. And it means it went out December, so.
Because this doesn't have anything to do with.
No.
The insurance. This just would be as if we wanted the employees to pay a person.
Right, and this we can, we've got the time to give them to figure that out. Yeah, we want to get that done by the first of January though, so they can, when they start with their new bill. So. We made the motion to approve the healthcare plan renewal. With some, right?
Leave it, leave it the way it is or?
No, she's just approving the plan with him, right?
She's gonna approve the plan, and then you guys can always change.
So we could do what we want to do with the employees later. Remembering the one that he proposed, the six, seven, twenty percent.
But you have, you have to choose the plan that they currently have or?
Yeah, right. The two thousand, four thousand.
S H A's, H S A. I think anybody, any insurance person who works.
Yeah.
Would you get the interest and stuff like that?
Well, I thought we were two thousand, four thousand, eight thousand, aren't we?
No.
I don't think we have enough time to. If you use that.
Oh, there, sorry. Thanks. I went down to the next one there. I'm glad you brought that.
One time my wife called us. She was on her.
We're two thousand, four thousand, right? For deductible, yeah. I was, but I don't know what that OPM is.
Auto pocket.
Okay.
They should have a max auto pocket.
Okay, that's how far as you go, the same one, okay, thanks.
And we raised that last year.
We, a year, two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago.
Yep. Yep. So Venus made the motion to choose the existing plan, to renew the existing plan as presented by Kent with this seven percent, uh, and change increase. Does anyone support that? Okay, so we've had a motion and a second, uh, motion by Jean and a second by Lexi to approve renewing the existing healthcare plan with Kent Faust with the employees. Do we have any other discussion or questions? In all favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carries. Now on tomorrow, okay? All right, the street finance report is included, the twenty twenty-three was submitted. We, I believe Michelle was learning, um, some things that we haven't been doing as a city, and that we probably should going forward, like tracking time, hours, employee time was not tied to this for streets, and it should, snow removal, cost of our sand, that might be in there. Um, so we might need to look at that going forward, but for now, this is from before. And of course, the equipment is listed and that required of the updates of the, uh, leased vehicles, and you see there. Anything used and its values. So we do not need a resolution, but we do need a motion to accept it, so that they can be recorded into the minutes going forward for the official acceptance from the DOT. I'll make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-three street finance report. Also, I've had it, Venus made a motion, and Carol has seconded, to accept the twenty twenty-three street finance report. Does anyone have any other questions related to this report? And all in favor of accepting the twenty twenty-three street finance report as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carries, we'll record that and submit those minutes to the DOT. Speaking of the DOT, we are on to item eighteen, amending traffic ordinance title four, chapter one, article five, one oh six. No parking zones to restrict parking to one side only on all truck routes and roads under twenty-nine feet wide, which will include boulevards. I did give you all a, I did make you get your own crayons out and draw these out. We tried to do this. So this, the purple is showing you the truck routes that currently already are existing in our code. The orange is what would be a new addition, because it is an under twenty-nine foot width street. And the yellow are the ones that have school specific hours only, tied to school schedules. Uh, and then the two little bits of green are the only ones that are not already on a truck route or, and they are existing already, no parking on the one side.
And then there's a little red one there I put for the fire, existing fire station. But that is the full extent of from property line to property line, including over into the, this original map we had, kind of didn't include all of our roads and areas, so this is a little more thorough. Does anyone have any questions about the map?
I don't know why we would want to try and do this because the last two times we did this, when we tried to do this, we called hell for it. And I don't know that we want to go down this rabbit, I don't know that we want to go down this rabbit hole again.
You'd rather have the ambulance or the fire truck not be able to reach a certain location and it's.
I thought the only one we talked about was the truck route one by the school, like maybe during football games, parking on one side.
Well, I think that would make it all the time, though.
Well, okay, they, that's the only one we, I think we really talked about. I think that's the only one we.
Well, then the other one, until it grows back, we finish that street out.
There's that, there's that.
There are probably schools on that.
That's one thing, the truck route one, just put no parking on one side, and that would be the only one we changed.
That's the only issue in the whole town, all the other streets that are twenty-four feet wide are not a concern to you? Because you don't live on that?
I'm not saying that, but I like agree with Steve. I don't think we want to go down the, down this again.
No, I don't think we want to do this.
Yeah, I don't know. I know what you're saying. I did talk to the three people that were the three, there was two couples and stuff that came to our opening, or whatever you want to call it, we had a public open house, and they all feel we should do it. I know that's just a very tiny percentage of who was at our meeting. But I did ask them what their thoughts were, and they said, don't, well, they said, whatever you do, don't just pick and choose.
Well, we've already, we've already picked and chose.
But we didn't do that.
No, but in the ordinance, in the current ordinance, it does specify certain streets that have no parking on it.
Right, right.
And if you want certain streets with no parking, then do name those streets, but don't do a blanket ordinance and say in there all, anything under twenty-nine feet, because the majority of the streets in this town are less than twenty feet wide, and that would be.
No, just that orange ones are twenty-four feet wide.
That's a lot of streets.
That's the same one we talked about last time with this green and grows back.
They're actually considered twenty-five foot streets because you measure from back a curve to back a curve.
So I, I don't, I really don't think we should go down this, I really don't.
Do you think we should do that, not the school one or none of them then? Just let it go?
Wait, wait till, wait till after January, and if the new council wants to do something with it.
You and I will just leave? No, 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 no.
You got them right there, you can ask them.
They're not, they're not making decisions at this point.
No, they're not.
The new council comes in next year, so.
So you'd rather pump to them?
I would rather not get in a position like we did the last two meetings and have a, have a terrible firestorm like we did before. It's not good, it's, I.
How many people complained about it?
Two.
Two people? And then one of them didn't even look on this.
I haven't heard anybody complain about parking on the street, so.
Well, that's how it all started, though. That, that part of Grossbeck wasn't.
Yeah, that's what started.
That one street, part of Grossbeck, and the rest of Grossbeck is no parking on one side, so.
I just, me, I just don't think we should do it. We're asking for trouble.
What about on Willow, though, down by the school? You want parking on both sides of those?
Well, and we've had a conversation about that. The only time it seems to be a problem is when they have football games, and typically they only have four home games. And so that's, but yes, that does get congested.
Then you've got freshmen and I think junior high, too, do they use it as well?
And track, yeah.
And that street does get congested, yeah.
So you're just, you're going into farming season, I mean, you know. So, I mean, when we would come back from Germantown, we would take that route whenever we would come in, unload. It gets pretty tough, you know, going through there. So if you don't do something, I think, just on one side of the street, that's, and some ice, you know.
Yeah.
And so I said, that's, isn't that, we said that was the truck route, so that's why I said if we do anything.
That's literally the only street that has asked something to be done.
That's the only street I think we need to worry about.
There's adequate parking there, but they just don't park them right. You know, because they got the, that whole, on the south end of that parking, they don't make them go down there. Then there's that spot next to Lushers, nobody ever parks down there.
Well, I don't think they can use it for that. I don't think the school has ever left them to use it.
It's part of that parking lot.
But they, that's where the house was.
It's because, yeah.
I know, but I think it's still their property, so they got to say.
That's the no parking zone.
Yeah.
The ordinance is specified.
Even, even.
So I, I mean, until they start using it for that.
They used that. No, down there in that valley, they never parked cars down there.
On, on their existing lot, there's a lot of space they never really properly.
But it doesn't name Willow.
Which that will be changing all here, too.
If we wanted to do Willow, that would.
They're not going to put concrete all the way down. Where's the junior high?
Up until, it's a day street, because then that is the, the truck route, that, right?
No.
That's literally the only street they requested. And it's like a whole lot of.
Makes a right turn and then goes up.
If you put no parking on.
It makes a right turn past St. Lushers.
Okay.
But then if I would, if I would do anything, then I would specify. Just specify that.
They're on the side of where the. But further down, that next block, they're on the side.
By the school, I mean, by the school parking lot.
Yes, the school ones, and then, you know, there are both sides there.
It'd be way different when they start doing.
But.
No parking.
Yes.
Or on one side of that street.
You're the one sided.
But the school. For example, the, I showed this to her, but the, the current, no parking zones are, are specified in the ordinance.
Right.
For example, Maple Street from Grand Avenue to South Corporate Line, Broadway Street from Maple Street to Mikkel Street, and so on. So it names the street specifically.
Right.
So then, if we wanted to do Willow specifically, then name that street specifically.
Name that street. Because that's one pass of school, the, the.
Yeah.
That actually is already covered. It is already covered north of the school, it's already.
Well, only during the day.
Just, just till four p.m.
Oh, that's.
The Pacific hours. So what, what, what option would be to just change that to a permanent no parking? And then maybe extend it down one block?
Yeah.
Right.
See, because that's, that's Grossbeck, doesn't have parking all the way through.
Number eight says Willow Street on the east side of Broadway to Grossbeck, between hours eight and six.
Yeah.
So that gets you to Grossbeck, but we're saying south of Grossbeck, that other block, that is also a problem.
East side of Willow.
Okay.
From Green Street.
You want on the south side of school?
Green.
Careful with that.
Well, they don't have no parking on that because of the.
Yeah, that's when you can or when you can't.
And that's what they got to do, too, because they got to put everything all the way down on that instead of just that section.
No parking.
Because I don't know how far is that school, because you're close that side.
So they can park on the west side of. So it comes from back to Broadway.
We're talking about.
This is, this one right here, where the street grows.
So you could extend that, you could extend that one down to Green.
You get that side.
And then extend your, change your hours.
Make it permanent instead of daily.
Right, right.
A lot of parking on one side.
So, yeah, just make it permanent.
Yeah.
And, and that would.
No parking on one side.
That would alleviate that.
That congestion there.
Yeah. Look around the corner, that's, that's Grossbeck, that's.
North side, yeah, from Village.
School and the H's.
Yep, right. And I have the same hours, oh, they have eight to four. You can't park there then, after that, so basketball games and stuff, park there again.
Yeah.
So how about we take the sign out that's, or put a permanent sign that says no parking at the school because it says till four, and then extend it, like, make it a block. That's the only change we make.
Then you're not going to do anything on the.
On, well, you just.
The Willow Street.
From Green to, on Willow Street?
Yeah.
From Green to Highway ten?
Yeah, extended, yeah.
Or just from, from Green Street to Broadway, really, that, and that would just cover that length of the school.
That east side there.
Yeah, all he does, that is.
Everybody keeps.
On the east side of the street. Because at one part, you have all houses.
I, I agree, we need to do more than just Willow Street, but we need to do a way better presentation that's saying, this is where no parking on this side of the street or that side of the street, and I think, I just.
This is how the curtains form.
There's too much open-ended discussion here.
You know, it's just too, that just leaves it too wide open.
I think when you sit down and plan, then.
Not make a generalization.
Yes.
These ones necessarily generalize, they aren't pertaining to the same size as what they would have been. So on Grossbeck, if you were, already you would use the existing rural spec north side of the road and continue that, why would you switch it up in a different side of the block? So they were presented basically the same way. I would assume you would use all north, just like you do, you use all east and the others, north, south ones.
Well, I would just go through our current ordinance.
That's what that is.
And. Yeah, yeah, use the current ordinance and, and discuss that and decide. That's going to take some time to work through that, and maybe.
I think somebody just work on it and get it written up.
Maybe it should be the street committee to do that. And that'd be my suggestion. And I think if, I know it's been taken off of it, I think Jane or I on the street committee.
I think Jane and I are.
I have no clue.
Yeah, I have Jane's.
I might have.
It used to be.
I don't know what it matters.
I'll go look.
You said right.
Utilities and streets, Gina J.
Gina J.
Well, is this an old one? This might be an old one.
I'm going to be able to.
Oh, you want twenty-three, huh?
Expect a presentation at your final, you know, next one.
It's a ten reason. It's a ten reason.
We got to, we got to heart it to Jane.
Why don't somebody else take it?
I think you should.
Everybody.
Okay, well, maybe we can have PowerPoint, Jay, what do you think?
Yeah, there you go.
I think we can get into PowerPoint. All right, so we're going to need to take action on this, I mean, take inaction on this by taking action on this. So what do, would someone like to say here? It appears, Steve, you are saying table it out.
I would table it.
And are you putting a committee, the streets committee, in charge of providing the next information or taking the next step?
I would. You know, well, he's exactly, no, I'm not talking about the market.
I thought you were trying to.
But, you know, it's, like you said, I would get a, like Steve said that one time, get a group together and do a study group.
And just have the, have the streets committee and, and then just have a workshop. And just, and then call the whole, whole council in and have a workshop and sort through it.
So Steve, are you making a motion to table this until the streets committee and a forum for a streets could be held at a later date? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
And you're making a measure motion?
You didn't make it?
You don't want to make a motion, yeah. We were looking to someone else then. You had the most to say, so I thought you were leading the charge here. Anybody else?
Why don't we have everybody think about it? And go through this again, huh?
Yeah, why not?
I think the committee idea is kind of a good idea, but being we're so close to the end of the year, maybe we want to wait then.
Yeah.
And do it. With a new committee or whoever.
That might be you, you know.
Huh?
That might be you, you know.
Well, you never know. Never know. Well, I'll have to sweet talk you and say, no. That's not for me.
I moved that we wait till the first of the year.
I'll second that.
All right, Jay has made the motion to wait till the first of the year, and Carol has seconded. Do we have any other discussion? Questions? Complaints? All in favor, say, moving into 2024, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion delayed. Okay, number nineteen. I'll delay this one, all right, for you. Would you like to introduce yourself and explain a little bit of what you have here for us today?
Um, I've been growing with back engineering. Um, we've been working with Kelly on replacement of the aeration units for the lagoons. You guys might remember that we actually did bid that project out a couple years ago. Got one bid, and it at the time didn't seem favorable, so decided to, to wait and go through with it again. So that's what we're here for now. Plans and specifications are updated. We're ready to bid this project out. Wintertime is the best time to bid these out, it's when contractors have time to look at projects and are looking at the upcoming year, so it's kind of the time to take a look at this again and, and get it from the contractors again. So we're looking at our, a bid date of January eleventh, which is a Thursday, and then having the public hearing to accept plans and specifications and then consider the bids at your regular council meeting on January fifteenth. And so all I'm looking for tonight is, I guess, direction on if, if we're okay to put this out for bid, to bid on January eleventh with your public notice on January fifteenth, or if you want those dates to be different for any reason.
It is an okay day on fifteen for our next meeting, and also understand it is caucus, I will caucus night. So perhaps moving the meeting in general, the regular meeting to your sixteenth would be wise because that, that is something council has to agree to, and then we would, we still have time to be able to do this and publish it.
Okay, your top secret. Yeah.
So any questions? Then related to this process? Would you like to change the time, the date, I mean? You could keep the proposal date, right, the eleventh, and then just push the next to the next, fifteenth to the sixteenth, if you wanted.
And then would that be at five thirty still?
Yes.
Is that what council wishes?
Tell Disney, do we make a motion or just go with it?
We have to. A motion, you have to read, you have to read that first paragraph with the new number in it. The city hall, so if someone would please. Council member, no one wants to read that?
I'll make a motion for notice of public hearing and lighting on Jan. I'll make a motion, uh, for notice of public hearing and lighting on January 16, 2024, at 5:30 for the Sanitary Sewer Lagoon Aeration Project.
I'll second. And that includes all the additional paperwork as provided? Steve, in your motion, including the rest of what is presented other than that date change? Keeping the 11th, keeping everything else has presented.
Everything else stays the same.
Yep. Okay, so Steve just presented the notice of public hearing and lighting for January 16 at 5:30 p.m. 2024 for the public hearing, with the sealed proposals received by January 11 for the Sanitary Sewer Lagoon Aeration Project. Does anyone have any questions? Now, let's see, yeah, let's do a roll call vote on that.
Uh, Steve Heron.
Aye.
Carol Longhouse, aye. Jay Jones.
Aye.
Lexi Murphy.
Aye.
Gina Ruff.
Aye.
So that is now set, and you have a revised one?
Yes.
For tomorrow, for the sign, and we'll have to adjust the meeting date, which that, um, we'll have to put that on the next agenda probably officially to say that because we can't include that in this move. Okay, but keep that in mind for December, January. Okay. Item 20, should we copy that again? No, then we'll pack it.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Amendment, zoning ordinance, Article 15, sign regulations and restrictions for digital signs in residential and commercial districts, the second reading. And we're leaving the third one calling it incomplete, so that the churches can use their signs going forward.
So I have some comments here. So the, so some things don't make sense to me, but what I want to point out is there are some things here that, um, need some attention. So, if you, do we have that? In, in the zoning book, in Section 15.3 on line 12, it defines illuminated signs. And it says, "Any illuminated sign which has character, letters, figures, designs, or outline illumination by electric lights or luminous tubes are, are as part of the sign proper." And I know this is, it looks minor, but it, it's a wording thing. So if we look at the amendment, the first line of F, it says, um, "It says all flashing internally illuminated audible signs are prohibited in all residential jurisdictions, except internally illuminated signs are allowed for churches." But in the, in the zoning code, it's not worded that way. So if, so that sign type would either, we'd have to add, "Except internally illuminated signs," and we'd have to add that wording, or change the wording in line 12. And then if you look at, uh, line nine in 15.3, um, flashing signs. "Any illuminated sign not maintained at a constant intensity or color when such sign is used. A sign providing public service information, such as time, weather, date, temperature, or similar information shall not be considered a flashing sign." So I looked at, and I'll just use Zion for an example, I looked at that. So with that, by that definition, that would not be considered a flashing sign, um, down there at Zion. In which I think we probably would all agree that that's not a flashing sign.
It was though.
It was.
It was a first.
It was a first. Because you could see clear up there on Main Street.
Yeah, it was flashing before.
You didn't use the flash, Steve?
Well, so that, I'm going by this definition. So they, apparently they took it, the flashing off.
Yes.
Yes.
I assume what they mean by flashing is if you have like at a car lot and those lights are flashing to get your attention, I assume that's what that, that's what this definition would mean. But I, so by, by definition, it wouldn't be considered a flashing sign because it, um, it provides public service information, time, weather, and date on it.
How's that public service? That's a, that's a church, they're giving you information, that, that's not public service. Public service is more like a city sign or something like that, right?
Yeah, and ordinance or in the, in the zoning code, it doesn't define public service. Boom.
So you would rather have that sign flashing down there?
In residential area?
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. No, no, not at all. So the third of my, item I had, so the, so I'm wondering if the, if the church sign would be exempt from the ordinance because it's a non-conforming sign. So if you look at, uh, Section 15.3, line 15, um, definition of a non-conforming sign. "A sign which lawfully existed prior to the adoption or amendment of this ordinance, but which does not conform to the regulations of this zoning ordinance." So that sign was put in place in 1958. They just updated, you know, this, the center section. And, and I'll get through this, and then I'll, I'll get to actually what, what my point is. So, let's see, what, if you turn to, um, 15.8, that very, very first sentence, "The city may upon request grant a variance from technical requirements of this article where the proposed sign complies with the standards of this ordinance and where unique circumstances render technical compliance with this ordinance impractical." So what I'm getting at is, if, if the Presbyterians want to put their sign, if they want to do a sign like Zion did, why don't we just issue them a variance? Let them do their sign. And, and then they get their sign, and then we address every, address this ordinance at a later date. And I think that the people that should be addressing this ordinance would be the, the Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustments, they're the ones that should probably, probably would do this because it would be an amendment to the, it would be an amendment to the zoning code.
Well, isn't that what ours is now, an amendment to the zoning code?
Right, but I think, I think they're the ones that, I think the...
The committee?
Yes, the committee, that Board of Adjustments should be the ones looking at this and, and doing that. And then bringing the amendment to the council and getting approval there. I think that's how this really should all be handled.
I guess I don't know. I guess we have to approve what they do too, though, don't we? Has, we approve them after they make the change?
The Planning and Zoning Commission?
No.
71, if you have your book there. What they do, 71, oh, not that, this is the regular.
Oh, not the zoning.
Planning and Zoning Commission has specific powers. Zoning plan, recommend changes. Study subdivisions, make surveys for guidelines, survey and recommendations on streets and alleys. It's not, that's all it says on that section, the Board of Adjustments. It's in an amendment, I believe, or, I mean, um...
What section?
Set that up, the Board of Adjustments was set up. Did it back of your book? You amended the ordinance in ordinance number 12, you amended the zoning map, the business card. Council amended the zoning definitions in the entire thing in 2018. Zoning 11, ordinance 11, was to set up the zoning book. That is all done by council in 2018. And then for the Johnson property, when you gave them permission to change it into DI.
Well, Steve, I'm going to tell you this, I talked to the guy that's in charge, Spencer, of the Northwest Iowa Zoning, and he is the one that suggested. When I told him what had happened, that they had put a new sign in their old sign, but it was flashing and was all this, and he's got our zoning book, because evidently he helped with it, and he said, first he said, "Rules are rules," and he said, "They should have to take it down." I said, "Well, I really don't like that idea." I said, "As a church, I hate to see that happen." I said, "Plus, we've got another church now that wants to put up a sign like it." But I said, "The first church did not get a permit," so I said, and why, I don't know why they didn't come in and at least ask, but regardless, that's passed. And he, so then the more we talked, he said, "He's the one that suggested we make an amendment and do these three entities, and tell them that they can't flash it, and, you know, they can, and, you know, watch your lighting, your lumens, and all that stuff." So it's kind of his thoughts, this is how, as a council, we should address it and leave the church have its sign, but kind of put it down. And also then the other church would have no issue. And he said, "And chances are, if you have, like," and then I told him we were going to be enlarging our school, and he, I said, "So maybe they'd want one sometime," and he said, "Right." So then make churches, schools, and government entities. And he said, "I just think you need to address the brightness, the flashing, and whatever." Because he said, "Being since they're all in residential areas, you cannot change what your zoning laws say." He said, "Without starting a whole big deal." So he said, "And you're a small community," so he said, "I think that would help take care of it." And so when I talked to him, then Brendan had been gone, I came and told her, I said, "I think this is all we have to do, is redo it." So that was kind of how that all got done. And like I said, I feel that Darren, I can't think of his last name, but he's, he's very knowledgeable, he's very good about helping us, and so I felt it was the way to go.
I don't think we're asking for too much on it.
No.
All they're doing is, all they're doing is, it's in a residential area, that's the point. And, you know, you've got to be a good neighbor, you know? It's just like if you had a neighbor that had a security light that shined in your house all the time, you know?
Right.
You know, and it, and it was super bright, because you drive down Main Street and you could see it flashing in there.
Yeah.
But it, we're not asking for too much, I don't think the city is. Just to calm it down and don't flash in, in those hours, and that's nothing, you know? You can still see it, the only place you can read it from is if you're at the street right there, or the sidewalk, so that's, you know, you don't need 5,000 candle power to, you know, read it. But like I said, if we don't pass it, we'll have to shut it off.
But I hate to make them do that.
Yeah, because it's, it's not a bad sign, it just, it was just, you know, too bright.
I think they wanted to update, and that's what they did.
Because it looks nice now, you know, when it is, it's bright.
It's not so bright, it's not into everybody's home.
I drive by it at night and it looks nice.
Yeah.
I'm sure nobody wants a flash in the window, you know?
And that was the problem at first.
Yeah.
So...
I just think they recognize that, and I think, I think they're willing to, um, in that, um, I didn't have anything to do with that sign, I wasn't, I didn't, um, I wasn't on the board, and I didn't make a decision when they, they did the sign, and I'm not defending the sign. I, I agree, we need, we need an ordinance, we need to follow the rules, we need some rules on it, but I just want to make sure we do this correctly because like, unlike the tree ordinance, we don't want to have to go back and redo it when somebody says, "No, I really want, want it this way."
I understand.
So, you know, there are some things that really should be looked at hard before, and, and, you know, before we approve this and get it, before we pass it, to make sure that we're all, um, doing it correctly.
Do you call the other cities or, God, what theirs was, is that how you got this?
That's going more from the direction of the provider of the signs, who's going to all these towns.
Oh, the guy that put the sign in down there says this? Okay, so that's the, you know, that's, he, he does it all around. Is the one in the press tree going to be a one side or two side?
I don't just want one side.
So, I mean, and, and I want to caution you on the wording, um, so that we should, you know, make sure that the wording is in alignment with the existing ordinance, zoning ordinance. Also, the other thing I wanted to point out is, and I noticed this in the, um, commercial also, and I, I don't think I have that one with me, but the commercial, the hours of it, signs must be turned off from the hours of 9:30 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. If it, um, if it's adjacent to or across from residential. So I want to caution you on that. The first co-op gas station, uh, has Egg State, they have a first co-op system, Egg State owns it. That's adjacent to or across from residential. Casey's also is adjacent to and across from residential. So I would want to caution you on that, having that in the commercial.
Those aren't the same type of signs, but isn't that where they said the service stations?
That's, that's just, that's just a lighted sign, it's not a flashlight.
Yeah.
Internally illuminated changing sign or...
Service, yeah, service stations shall be limited to three square feet per lineal foot of, of street, where a ser- service station has furnished more than one street. Only one street furnished may be used to compute. Um, the allowed sign area in no case, however, shall the total of signs of any one service exceed 300 square feet.
And if you read N right before that, it says, "No illumination shall be intermittent, flashing involving or animated," so there exist in Casey signs currently and Egg State co-op signs are not, they're just lit signs, they're not flashing or something.
But they're, so as per the amendment, though, it says internally illuminated signs.
You know what?
So I'm just saying that we need to be cautious that way.
Well...
So we, we really need to take the time and go through the zoning book and take the time and go through each amendment.
What word do you like to strike, flashing or internally illuminated, or what is your complaint with the wording?
What word do you like to strike, flashing or internally illuminated, or what is your complaint with the wording?
Well, I'm just saying, if, if...
That was approved last time, two weeks ago.
Oh. So on, um, in section 15.3, line 12, it, it defines, um, the sign type, illuminated sign. And then on the amendment, it says internally illuminated signs, and so, yeah, you either remove that internally off of the amendment, just so it lines with the current zoning, I mean, that's, that's minor. But it, you know, I don't think, I want to caution you on that, having it turned off at 9:30 to 7:00, is that the, the, the zoning ordinance does not exempt, for example, Casey's or the First Co-op sign.
We're not talking about the same sign type anymore.
Pardon?
The, the signs that are being proposed here to be changed, whatever, be considered are just basically the LED wording, internally illuminated, not just the light bulb behind a piece of plexiglass standard sign.
Right.
They're different, so that...
So you're gonna, so the zoning...
So we're not asking Casey's to turn its light off at nine o'clock?
Yeah, you're talking two different things, that are internally illuminated and, and illuminated.
Well, and we're saying, it's for churches, schools, and colleges, we weren't saying anything about...
If that sign down there is not internally illuminated, Steve, because there's no light inside the sign, it's on the outside.
It used to be, an internally illuminated, it was before, but it was like, that's how they backed it, basically a background sign.
Well, I'm just saying, that's not a...
Yep, I understand that. But then, I'm going to the, so I, what I was talking about was the commercial, um...
Yeah, but that's internally illuminated, there's a light inside the sign. It's not, there's something stopping the light from going out, it's not, not like that one there where it's, you know?
The light is actually making the sign.
So there is no... No, I guess you don't understand.
You know what?
I was pointing out that, um, signs must be, on the commercial amendment, signs must be turned off from the eight hours of 9:30 PM to 7:00 AM. And in, this is in the commercial amendment, um, "All properties in commercial, industrial, agriculture districts are adjacent to or across the street from property zone, a residential district must comply with the following." So you're, so what I'm saying is, the Casey store is directly across from, uh, uh...
Residential.
Residential, and so is the First Co-op one, so... Um, you know, then that probably should come out, because that's going to apply to them also. I don't see an exemption in the zoning ordinance that exempts those two businesses from, if you make this amendment this way.
Well, we'll have to do that at another time.
This is only related to the new kind of sign, this has nothing to do with it, it's added to the existing ordinance, it doesn't take it away.
You're coming up with other stuff that we need to do at another time, and that too, but this is, we're talking about this thing down here.
So everything still exists, M, and OP, all the alphabet letters before D exist, they don't change out of the commercial. 77 and 78 stay there, you are just adding item P. Meaning that any residential, that any business that's directly facing or whatever, a residential area needs to be cautious and make decisions when it updates its signs to something like an LED flashing, light emitting, diode type sign.
That's not what the amendment says.
Added wording so that it would make it more bridge for you, I realized that this is...
I'm just advising the council that the amendment is, is clearly, and clearly it says, "Signs must be turned off from the hours of 9:30 to 7:00 AM." That's in the commercial district. And there's, and I'm saying, there's two properties that would fall under that, so...
So the stations are not, are exempt?
Where does it say that?
In the M, which would be two items before the addition added here. And service stations shall be limited to three square feet, you read it before. And M, all signs should be fixed and not auto, illumination shall be intermittent, flashing, which is what we're saying, flashing, illumination, not allowed. Now scrolling, electronic marquee signs, if they do not flash rapidly, no signs will be in person, please, everybody's decided.
I request one. So if we don't have this second reading tonight, the church has to turn off their sign, is that what I've understanding?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're illegal signs.
And redo all this?
Well, the other thing I'm wondering, if we're having some issues with this, and wondering, I agree that, Steve, we do not want to make an amendment to an amendment, but why don't we take what's been worked up and send it to the gentleman in Spencer, who helped make this book? He's very good about going through it, looking, and saying, "Do you feel we have missed something here, or have we done too much, or whatever?" And have him look at it, and then just table our second reading at this point, and then hopefully that would make it, so they don't have to shut it down, have him look at it, and get back to us.
And have the second reading at the next meeting?
Yes, and then if he sees...
Can I say something?
Yes.
This church has been waiting, and waiting, and waiting for months, could we just do a variance so they can at least put their sign in? And then once we figure everything out, then they have to start following the rules?
I think they should put it in.
Well, I, I think that the rules are specific, and we should, we should pass them, but, but, but the, but the issues are, it does have nothing to do with this, we're changing.
I just, to me, let's cover our, cover our butts, and let's have him look at it, if he, because he's good, he's, he looks at it, I mean, he talked to me while I was driving to Des Moines, and he is telling me all this different stuff, he's looking at the zoning map, and he's looking at our rules, so I just feel he's very knowledgeable, let him check it out, and get back to us. So that we are not...
Can we make a, can we do a variance?
It's too something Presbyterian people can go against with their sign, I guess, I thought they were...
In the zoning, in the zoning books, it said we can, and maybe it, you know, maybe it's something that...
But we can't, because it's not on the agenda though.
No, I know, for now, for...
So maybe it's something that the, uh, the zoning commission should look at, and, and, um, if they grant a variance and they come to us and say, "We granted the variance," then they don't even have to come to us to say they granted the variance. So...
I don't, I know neither, adjustment, I think we're due to...
Yeah, so I mean, if we, if we wanted them to look at it, I'd be willing to visit with Darren about this and go through this, we can email this to him, and I'd be willing to go through it with him, and make sure we have everything correct.
Yep, I think he would do very good.
I mean, there's just a few things that don't align with the zoning code in, in these amendments.
Right, and then if he has any questions, we do, we've got some of these written down in the questions, have him get ahold of you.
So in the meantime, what can we do with the Presbyterian church?
I think they have to put their sign up, and they followed the rules after we have the...
Yeah, so they put it up, at least they got that much done, but I don't know that we, we can't make a variance at this point, this is not on the agenda.
But we could tell... But we shouldn't encourage the use of doing things without permits, because that's how we got to this...
Yep, well, they got a permit, right?
They did, they were trying to go by the rules, so that is the problem.
So they did do a permit.
And now they are wait hold, waiting for the result of this.
Right.
So what is the problem with this amendment that we're trying to pass with this, with the sign? You're just saying because of Casey's and Co-op?
Well, do you have, do you have your commercial one?
No, no, I, but I'm just saying, what's, what's the problem with it?
The, well, the problem I see is that, on the commercial one, the signs must be turned off from the hours of 9:30 to 7:00 AM. And that, that could present a problem there. Those are the only two commercial businesses that...
Well, we, we could change that, that has nothing to do with this amendment thing.
Security State Bank would be very...
Yeah.
Security State, yeah.
There's a house in the corner.
Yeah.
Iowa State Bank, they got a sign on the side, they're building.
Yeah, but they're not adjacent to residential.
A lot of people are like both, though, but apartments...
Yeah, but it's not zone residential, it's zone commercial.
The apartments upstairs are zone commercial?
The apartments across the street from Iowa State Bank is zone commercial. But yeah, there's residents there.
I just think we should let somebody, like, I think our zoning committee's gonna probably have to say with the same questions.
Yeah, they, yeah.
I mean, I can see that.
Yeah.
So let's get to this gentleman and see what he thinks, but I do feel bad that, oh, they haven't done their sign yet. I guess I thought they were putting it up quite a while ago.
Well, I'll, I can talk to, I think Mike's the president of the, um, zoning commission, so I could...
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustments, I'm sorry, um, but I could talk to him once and, and visit with him.
Give him some of the information.
There's a speed process to have them review something, six weeks, because you have to publish their hearing and all of that.
I just, I think we'd better get it right.
So that we would be able to...
I know the Presbyterians, so I'll talk to Mike about the, if we can, if they can request a variance. And then I'll visit with Darren about some of these things.
Sounds good. Now we can send you that whole thing, you've got them all in, you know, right?
Right, and I wrote some things down that Iowa State Bank's...
If he's got some, if he sees those issues are a problem, then we can fix it before we continue.
So in the meantime, the Presbyterian church can't have a sign in, sign can?
Sign can, I guess. That's what we're saying.
I guess.
Well, that's why I feel that, I thought they were putting it out.
And if they had a permit, they'd be nice to wait, because they were waiting for it correctly.
They've been waiting for months for a decision, months.
And they're offering to do it correctly.
They're being punished.
By the delay. Okay, well, we could also, I mean, we could ask, we could ask as long as I am going on, in the meantime, the story's resolved. Because technically, if we don't pass this, then the ceiling will have to be turned off.
Right, but I want to make sure...
Signs would have to be turned off then, if we don't pass this.
Yeah, if we don't pass this, we might have to turn off the sign, because it's a little sign.
Well, it's only fair, we're not letting them put theirs up.
I just, I just think, I just think that this has nothing to do with Casey's sign and that sign, let's handle that in a whole different...
Well, show me how it doesn't, show me how it doesn't.
Because it's not a, it's not that kind of sign. That's, that's a sign, that's not a, this is a, this is not an internal illuminated sign, that's an external illuminated.
You have to vote yes or no on the amendment?
Right, motion.
Nope. I'll make the motion that we amend zoning ordinance article 15 sign regulation on restrictions for digital signs in residential and commercial districts.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Jane, a second by Jane, to amend the zoning ordinance article 15 sign regulations on restrictions for digital signs in residential, commercial districts as a second reading.
And I'll waive the third.
And waiving the third. I need to ask if there's any discussion, if I legally require to. Is there any discussion related to the ask on the table?
I already have my discussion.
Then we can call for a vote, all in favor of amending the zoning ordinance article 15 sign regulations on restrictions for digital signs in residential, commercial districts, second reading and waiving the third, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, say nay?
Nay.
As noted, would you like to report your reason, Steve?
No.
Your reason, yeah, okay. All right, yes, they can. All right, I report. Home Town Christmas was awesome, for those of you who were there, I saw a lot of you there and around, there were a lot of people around, so it was great. Kelly did awesome, she brought in Santa and Mrs. Claus, which was very necessary and helpful, and he did look very holiday-ish, if you missed his outfit, do try and find out what it was that, it sure does.
Was that the one you had last year?
Yep.
I did see it badly, but I see you the year before.
Oh, you're funny, yes, I love that one, yes.
Remember seeing you.
We'll bomb Ralphie from now on.
Don't shoot your eye out. And the bank building that you offered to the chamber, you had an awful, you want to speak on that? Since you were here asking for it, but you said it was beautiful.
It was great, and a lot of people really liked it, because we had a lot more people that were able to be in the bank. Otherwise, we would have a long line outside, which was fine, it was cold, and we were able to utilize some of those other offices in there for different crafts and, and other things, um, yeah, I think that, um, it was, it was great. I hope that we can use it in the future. Um, one thing, and I don't know if this has to be on the agenda, since we do have all of this stuff still in there, are you planning on doing anything with the bank right now?
Not right now, but I don't...
I haven't heard anybody say anything about it.
I mean, is it something that we can leave our, our stuff in there, um, for the intention of using it?
As long as we're not liable for it, I guess.
No, no, and it, it really is, it's decorations, it's really nothing that is, that's worth anything, it's just decorations. If we can use it for next year, it would be kind of nice to be able to leave all of that stuff in there, but if not, I mean, that's completely understandable too.
Well, I think unless we find out something, we'll let you know.
And if someone needs to go in, and if you don't want that stuff, we can always go in and take it out.
I like the front door, it's still cute.
Yeah.
I think you should leave it through the end of month, so it's kind of fun to have people walk on the sidewalk and see it.
All right, I will pass to Kelly.
Uh, reading meters last month did not go well, I don't know where meter reads went, but they're up in the cloud somewhere or something, um...
So we don't have to pay?
Yay.
Ooh, I could buy Christmas presents.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to the city, yeah?
Bet you'll get a double one next month.
Yeah.
We talked to G Works and Itron, and they couldn't come up with any answers. Our plan right now is to go from last year's billing up to the same month, and go with that, and then get everything caught up next month when we read. By the time we were gonna reread, half the month was over, so we had a, kind of, reading that was beneficial to anybody, I guess. They'd have a high bill and a small bill the next time, and...
So this new reading now, when you do it in the middle of January, or the middle of December, I guess, will it include the one that's in the clouds? Or don't you know?
No, that's gone.
Oh, it's gone, no words on it.
Yeah, I think they ended up saving over it, so then when we go to do Decembers, then it should hopefully be normal.
Yeah.
And then Michelle and I are working through all of them, just to double check, make sure everybody's bills are, they seem correct, based on last month, because sometimes our system estimates weird, but, so we're making sure everything looks good.
It's taking the consumption from last November and then the current rate, so, you know? And then, I think there's that extension of the...
Oh, the due date will be extended from the 20th to the 27th, just so everything will be looked through and whatnot?
Since people won't have as long than one month, one week shorter with the bill.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Extend a week to, a lot of things that way, everyone still has their same window of time for booking.
And we'll, we'll put a notice on the bills, so that everybody's aware when they get their bills.
Sounds good.
Maybe, can we put them like on Facebook, or? We can do that too, yeah, just in case, we have to put out the bills in case no one looks at Facebook, because that would be...
Line up on it.
Uh, we got, we talked with Hartley, their superintendent is going to sign our sewer stuff until we get somebody certified, and they're working on a 2080 agreement with us.
I talked to her today, and she said they're gonna, if we can do just a simple contract, it would be good enough. As I said, I don't know why we need a 2080 for us, just a short amount of time, hopefully, and she said, if we had anything, so I did talk to Brenda, um, like an old contractor, something similar, and otherwise, if we don't, she's gonna work on one. similar, and otherwise, if we don't, she is going to work on one over, and that's, we figure that's good enough.
And Josh is, I don't know what's been going on with the DNR, but it's been slow, his, he'd signed up for a test a few weeks ago, and it's going to be two months before he can take the test, so.
Oh, my gosh. And you were looking at what, water or sewer, for yourself?
I plan on doing both of them. I talked with NIPCO. They talked to us about the switch before. They got a new idea. NIPCO would like to take ownership of the half mile of Polino easements that goes west of the current location of K four eleven, which is our switch. So they're working on getting the easements and whatnot, Polino would transfer the easements to NIPCO, and NIPCO would rebuild the half mile double section to the gravel road there. So right now, our switch is in the middle of the field, and anytime they have to do switching, they just go further out, because they don't want to go in the middle of the field, because it's usually in the wintertime. So this new switch would be right on the gravel road, which would make easier access for those guys. And they would, the cost to build that half mile would be, NIPCO would pay for that.
Sounds good to me.
We have been cleaning up stump grannings, somewhat finishes up electric on the east side of town there, and we did have a water bean break last week, we ended up having to call SCE, because it was in the field driveway, and it was deeper than we could manage with our equipment, so they came in with an excavator and got it fixed for us.
Is it rough because of old, or?
Just, it's been so dry, the dirt just kind of turns to powder down there, and then it's got room to move, or.
So you need to sprinkle some of that?
Huh?
Can you sprinkle it out there?
There's plenty of water out there now, you say?
There's a lot of water coming out of that ground.
How long I got?
So is he done, then, swaying back from town a little bit?
No, he's still got a little bit left. He did get a bunch of the big trees down while, while he was here, but he does plan on coming back.
They said he's as quick as I knew him to be.
Need a few fires to put out.
Did you have the guy from Cherokee come and look at the building? And actually, the one on Park?
Which building?
What building was it? I mean, it's our building, but what company was it?
They were coming to check.
They were going to come to check, though.
I'll wait and call them back, I haven't seen them since, so.
Oh, that's right, here. The guy from Two Center was going to do something, but he never did either, did he?
Right.
All right, okay, Officer Briner, what do you have for us?
I have to report.
Ryan, are you here to report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it my turn?
Yes, you're still awake.
Two hours.
You're up.
All right, so we are officially the owners of the egg state property north of town, the fire department. So as soon as that gets finished in the lawyer's office, I'll take over ownership, paper.
Excellent.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Yay. Been a long ten months.
It's been a long, long time.
Our chili feed went well?
Oh, yeah, chili feed went well.
Did the crab?
Yeah, about the same as normal.
Good. Department heads here, and, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we put in a call for VC three, because we sent an email, never heard back from them, so we're talking to them tomorrow, and we have, we found out that we have a silver agreement with them. The lady that we were talking to didn't know what that was, but she could tell that we had a silver agreement, I was like, okay, and so we're talking to them tomorrow.
We don't, you can't find any information in a file or anything on it.
They weren't in the phone, this thing in the system. Okay, yeah, we'll have a call with them tomorrow. And where are they out of?
Georgia.
Georgia, Alabama?
Yeah, somewhere around there. Okay, they're absolutely west, but. All right, council comments.
I'll make the emotional re-adjourn. I'm with you. I'll second.
Casey's made the motion, Jean is second, it's time to adjourn. Other discussion is likely to be needed, correct? So calling for a vote, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Forty-seven, the last one barely.